Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, it's kind of late tonight.
Mr. Bradley, you're on deck.
Uh huh, alright.
Can you catch any fish while I use the car?
Alright, at least you remember my name. I'm sorry, I've been here the last couple of months. Martin had a commitment, and then April, I am always gone first week of April to go fish. So, pretty well powered not seeing me in it.
Well, did you get anything?
Um, we caught one fish apiece. It was actually, it actually was the poorest, last two years were probably the two best fieldhead seasons we have had in the forty-five years, I guess, United Nations. It was an amazing, amazing couple of years. This year, there was no, there was no snow melt, there was no snow in northern Michigan, there was no snow melt. And there, so the rivers were really, really, and the entire west side of the state, there were just no fish. So, just everywhere. So, the reports were the same. So, there's always next year, and that's why it's fishing. Alright, so a few updates for you from the county. Uh, courthouse project is currently unscheduled and on budget. Uh, there's been some stories kind of floating around out there about the cost overruns on that. We are still at the approximately ten point seven million dollars that we have approved to date for that project. They are currently, they finished up the clock tower portion of it, working on getting the clock faces in, and now working on actually the roofing tiles on the building. So, uh, once the tiles are done, you'll see a bunch of scaffolding come down, and then they will do the main walls. At the same time, of course, we are refurbishing all of the windows. They are not replacing them. Uh, we hired a company that does historic buildings, and they're basically taking those entire windows units out. They are restoring them back to original, and, uh, so they'll be, they'll be weather tight, but they'll still be single pane glass, but they will look just the same, because that was one of the big concerns when we were looking at replacement windows. We just could not keep, keep the look on it. So, uh, the, the look on the windows will be the same. So, uh, right now, we are still planning early fall, probably September. And, uh, of course, the construction, uh, has disrupted the farmers market, which will open on Mother's Day weekend about two weeks from now. Uh, last year, they were completely out of the street. I believe that they will be back on our lawn this year. And, uh, there will be a final meeting with the, uh, the market folks tomorrow night. Uh, Commissioner Ingles, who was our facilities chair, uh, he will be meeting with them, but they have made overtures that they would like to be back on our lawn rather than out on the street. And I believe that he will see them. Like I say, they will be opening up for their sixteenth season. So, uh, really nice addition to our downtown. Um, the other component that we've talked about, uh, is district court. We, uh, you know, we sold the building, and we had, when we sold that a year ago, we had five years till totally vacated. Uh, we believe we now have a solution. Lifeways, our community mental health agency, they have been working with us, uh, probably since the first of the year, that they want a much larger footprint. They are expanding greatly their community mental health services, uh, very similar to what they've done in Jackson County. And they want to go from the approximately ninety-seven hundred square feet that they have right now to about a twenty-two to twenty-three thousand square foot building. Uh, we had had some discussions with them about them possibly building a building out of the care drive complex. Uh, they really want to own the real estate that they're on, as well as the building. We don't want to sell any buildings out there. Would be happy to work with them, uh, constructing at a long-term lease. You pay for the cost of constructing a new building. They don't seem to go into that. Uh, so, we have now voted and sent them a letter that, uh, their lease ends with us in twenty-twenty-five, I believe, the end of March of twenty-twenty-five. And we have told them that we will not be renewing that lease. However, we are open to a month-to-month arrangement with them until they find another location. Uh, that will free up that almost ten thousand square feet, the, the ground floor, because in the lower level, if you've been out in, in that building, it's strictly another shared apartment, Southeast Michigan Works is in the bottom section of that building. So, it'll only be the upper floor of it, and that will become the new location for our district court. So, it's a building we own. We won't have to buy a different building. We will have certain modeling costs. Of course, we do have money from the proceeds of selling, uh, the building in downtown. I don't know at this point. We, we are working with, um, the National Association of State Courts and their architect to design, uh, the interior of that building. Once we have that, then we can get an idea of what the actual cost will be, so I will share with you, as we get a little better handle on that when we eventually go out for bids on that project. Um, it's something we definitely will go outside of. It won't be something that our, our county facilities department fills out much like we did with the county office building. So, uh, but that looks like that that will be the location. I would say we're probably three years away from actually moving forward out there. So, uh, by the time Lifeways gets out, once we get the building, that, they vacated, we'll probably have a year to build it out after, after they're out of here. So, uh, stay tuned, I met them. The, uh, both our medical, county medical care facility and our transporting EMS agencies have had for a number of years an operational millage on the tax rolls, and, uh, both of those millages will expire, and so they need to be renewed by the voters. Uh, the medical care facility millage, that goes for the operations of that county medical care facility. EMS millages, we currently actually have two. One is a point eight-five of mil, that is just a general operations. And then we have a point one-five of a mil, which is for capital equipment purchases. The ambulance agencies have asked us to do much like we did with the senior center, where we had two, two half mils for total of one mil, to combine that point five and point one-five together into a single millage of one mil. And so, that is what we have done. So, you will see that. It is a renewal of an existing millage. Uh, so it is not an increase, same, same dollar amount, except it, it will reset because of that weight heavily, and you, and you deal with that here in the village every year, uh, with a heavy roll back. So, those millages, as they go on, that they do roll back a little bit here, so we'll, we'll reset it back to the full one mil for that, but nothing beyond what the original base was in the original millage. And, uh, so, and that will be a renewal on that. Uh, to that, we also are planning on having at our, uh, first meeting in May, uh, a proposal for a public safety radio system, uh, eight hundred megahertz radios for all of our public safety agencies within the county. Uh, preliminary from what we are hearing from our bond council, uh, because they have to work with us as far as figuring out what the rate would be and what the language will be. It looks like it will be just a shade under a mil for ten years. Uh, probably like point nine-nine of a mil. Uh, so it'll be just under a mil. And, uh, the, the length of time for that, we don't really want to go more than ten years, because our big concern is, is that that equipment has a finite life. It's technology, right? We all have technology, our phones, our PCs, those things don't last forever. And so, we're, we are concerned, the, uh, the towers, of course, they will have a much longer life. But all the things that are attached to those towers, the radios, actually at Central Dispatch and the radio equipment for, uh, all of the fire, police, and EMS agencies in the county, uh, we really don't want to go more than ten years. So, uh, we probably will have some lively discussion about that. Uh, and like I say, that will be expected to have that on our, uh, next meeting in May, and that would allow us to get it out of the, the August ballot as well. So, there has been some discussion about delaying that for the November ballot, uh, partially because, of course, it's presidential election here, where we will see the highest turnout within the county. Uh, I'm sure that will be part of that discussion as well. We did have the first use of our ambulance reserve fund. You may recall, I shared with you when we set our new contracts uh, with our ambulance agencies, we, for the first time, had an actual guarantee amount. They would know exactly how much they would be getting every year over the three years of their contract. But out of that, in order to do that, we created what's called an ambulance millage reserve fund. What that is, is number one, it indemnifies if we guessed wrong, based on the tax income we would get from that, on the fixed amount that the ambulance agencies, it would protect you, indemnify you, the taxpayers. If, if we were miscounted the first year, we know what taxes, what we'll take in. The second, the third year, we're making a very educated guess on that. So, that, number one. But the other was, is to create a pocket of money, a pool of money, that if the ambulance agencies collectively that serve our county needed a capital equipment expense, we might have money set aside that we could help them with that, over and above, uh, the funding that they already have. So, they asked us, they had to purchase new ALS, advanced life support drug boxes, because with the new state protocols that went into effect, they have a lot more medications. And also, the, the bag that we're using, they were getting, some, some, at least some of them were getting pretty threadbare and worn out. And so consequently, we did vote, uh, I think it was around seventeen hundred dollars, uh, that we took out of that reserve fund, paid for those boxes. Those will be used by all of the agencies within the county. And then another nice benefit of that is, because it's the same style of box that they are using in Jackson County, and our medical control authority, they modified our medication list to match exactly what Jackson's is. So, we, we are now working on creating a cooperative agreement with Jackson County. So, if a crew takes a patient from here in the township, because Allegiance isn't that far away, and they choose it, because that's where they go see their doctors at, they would like to go to Allegiance, they go to Allegiance, and the crew uses things out of that drug box, they will be able to exchange that drug box in Jackson County, rather than being out of service and having to come all the way back to Hilldale Hospital to make that drug box exchange. So, that, that would be a, a nice benefit from that. We did replace the microwave power links between the Woodbridge and Waldron Tower. Uh, our old BHF system, it, it does have a lot of hiccups to it, and we actually had that fail a couple of times so far this year. It went down to the third time, and they had told us the last time, if it fails again, you're really going to have to replace those microwave links. So, we did get that replaced, believe it was right around twenty-three thousand dollars, and that was paid out of the, the tower equipment uh, budget line item from Central Dispatch. So, they had the money, they have money set aside for those kinds of repairs within, uh, the nine-one-one budget does come from the operating fund that, that three dollars per device that can access nine-one-one, that each and every one of us pay every month. If you have a device that can access nine-one-one, for every one of those, you pay three bucks a month. And that, that money is how we fund our nine-one-one system in the county. The last item I have for you is that August twenty-third was the filing deadline, uh, for people running for office. And so, I did bring a log for you, and my paperclip on the floor. I have a listing of all of the candidates for all of the offices, starting with U.S. Senator, on down through all of the townships, that master list, and then I have a list of all of the county offices. So, you will, you will see some changes, uh, in twenty-twenty-five at the county level. Longtime, close to county prosecuting attorney Neil Brady is retiring. And so, the chief assistant prosecutor is the sole person who filed for that seat. Uh, so barring a write-in or any, any strange happenings, uh, that we can expect that she will be our next prosecuting attorney. Uh, there is a contested race for sheriff. Uh, there is a contested race for county clerk. Uh, Eve Day, who has been here before talking to elections, and Stephanie Scott, the former Adams Township clerk, uh, they will vie in the August primary for county clerk. Uh, county treasurer, that is an uncontested race, and the incumbent, uh, she will most likely be back. Longtime register of deeds, uh, Bambi Summerlaw is retiring. And Nick Wheeler, who has been county equalization director, and, uh, his family has very, very deep roots over in the Reading area. And, uh, he is, has chosen to run to be our next register of deeds, and he is running uncontested. Uh, that will be an interesting, because Nick has said that there are three counties in Michigan that, uh, the office of equalization director and register of deeds are combined, and that is his plan. Uh, I will let him, as he makes his way around and, and talks to folks, uh, give you details on that, but that is his plan, that, uh, equalization will actually come under, uh, the register of deeds office, and he will continue on with his certifications in that position. Um, you may recall that we expanded the county road commission board, and so there are, uh, two seats, excuse me, three seats, uh, on the county road commission that are up for election. One is a partial term, and Kathy Schmidt, she is running for that two-year partial term, and she is unopposed. There is no else that filed for that two-year. Uh, however, there are two six-year terms, uh, one incumbent, Mike Carty, and then, uh, Mark Ryan, whom we appointed, uh, when we expanded the number of seats, and there are two additional individuals that have filed for, uh, for road commission. Uh, our drain commissioner and county surveyor are both, uh, uncontested races, and the incumbents will most likely be back first of the year. And then all five of the county commissioner races, my own included, uh, do have contested races. And we have one race, uh, where there is a Democrat that has filed, and so Hilldale County, of course, being a very strongly Republican county, uh, the generally accepted maxim is you have to run as a Republican to get elected in Hilldale County. So, we rarely see Dems on the ballot. Uh, if we were in Wayne County, it'd be just the opposite. You don't see a lot of Republicans running in Wayne Counties. Uh, just simply for the same reason, it's a heavily, heavily Democratic county there. So, uh, but there is a Dem, so that, uh, that race will not be decided actually, uh, for the fifth commissioner district until the actually in November. And that concludes my report for the evening. Unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, moving on. We need a motion to reject the concerned agenda, treasure report, approval bill, the last minutes minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
And then you can all just initial the first pages and pass them back to me.
Okay, old business, are we ready? On the streets, you have, uh, this paper here telling you how much Belson's and Michigan paving is quoted, and you have the quotes that they give us.
I just provide Michigan paving.
Okay. And the reason, pardon the reason, that Michigan paving is more money is they're actually doing more work for us than what Belson's quoted. We have money, and probably ought to spend it. Pardon?
How can we do?
And, uh, the extra money, which is about forty thousand dollars for having Michigan paving do it, is because they're going to grind up the asphalt, similar to what we did going east-west there a couple of years ago, and lay back down thickness, and I don't remember. At least, oh, there it is, I'm sorry, finish and install two inches. They, Michigan paving advocated that if you just overlaid it like Belson's was going to do, it's probably going to crumble right up because it won't adhere to all of the chuck holes and old crap that we got on the roads now. I do know that ten years ago, Nap Street and Monroe Street was, never longer than that. We put something down similar to asphalt, but it wasn't called asphalt. I can't remember. Anyway, when they put it down, we couldn't drive on it for twenty-four hours, and it held up good, but it didn't hold up forever. So, now, Michigan paving wanted, that's part of the reason they're wanting to dig that out, because of all the dippy-dos. And I have asked them because of, um, I called them after last meeting. Where the driveways come out into the road, for some reason, they didn't do that little dippy-doo into the driveway about Yafar. And they're gonna, they assured me they would do that on these streets. So, and that's a lot easier keeping the dirt and the gravel and all that flush with the road. Whereas there's some spots here on this road going east and west, we've had to backfill a couple of times. So, unless anybody has any questions.
When will they start, when we approve it?
Um, they told me it could, it would be done this summer if I had called them after this meeting. Waiting till May, we, or excuse me, waiting till June, we may not, but I would say it won't be right away, but I would have a definite date for when they're going to come in. And, uh, I mentioned it before, I don't want to repeat myself, but these donuts around our manhole covers, by putting those cement donuts around them, they don't push down. If you go down North-South Street where they didn't do that, those manhole covers are pushing down from trucks and cars driving on them. And they're saying the cement donuts around them will keep them from pushing down.
And they plan on that?
They're planning on doing it. That's, that's part of the extra money that they're charging over Belson's. And those were not, I don't remember the cost, and I didn't look it up, but those are not just a thousand dollars a hole over there. They pave over it, or pave around it, and then they come back and they cut it out, and then they pour the cement in there, so.
It was like ten thousand dollars just for that portion, I think it's what I remember them saying.
But it does, it'll make the road better. So, if you're interested, I need a motion.
I would like to make the motion, that we go with Michigan paving.
Close second.
One thirty-six, eight thirty-six.
Close second.
Providing they get it done this summer.
Yeah, this summer. We want the road this summer.
That's just because you live on that street. I'm just, the road call coming in. Do we need a road call vote on that?
So, we looked into that with Michigan units, but we, as far as financial decisions. Um, and they said, when it comes to financial decisions, you go by what your village or what your local ordinance is. And a village in North Adams is not having ordinance. So, technically, we don't have to do a local vote for financial situations unless we establish an actual ordinance.
The only thing we've done in the past is when it's a large amount of money, we do a road call vote.
So, we, I mean, we can definitely do one to have a local vote, but it's not.
So, let's do a road call vote. Steven?
Aye.
Joanne?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Dallas?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
I drew a blank when I looked at Dallas, sorry. Okay.
Alright, so the next item is, uh, passing a resolution twenty-twenty-four dash one for, um, the purpose of holding a public hearing at our June meeting for the tax millage. So, um, our tax rate will be the same as last year, uh, but we still have to vote to increase it from the base amount. So, our increase is a, um, you're going from point, for nine point two-six-five-four to nine point seven-one-four-three. So, I just need a motion to accept the tax proposal resolution to hold a public hearing at the June fifth meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
To have a public, whatever it is.
Yes.
I'll submit it.
What was the number you had?
Sorry, twenty-twenty-four dash one.
Okay.
Uh, so the next item is grant money for the park. So, we received a two thousand dollar grant from the community foundation, and it was to be used for a new picnic table, a new garbage can, and then whatever's left over and used for landscaping, whether that be mulch, stone, whatever we would like to use it for. Um, so, I found, I can pass this around. It is just a commercial-grade picnic table, handicap accessible, and it does come in the North Adams green. And that would be eight ninety-eight, eighty-five, and then shipping, so I can pass that that way first. And then, uh, Sam's Club has a commercial-grade forty-two gallon garbage cans for a hundred and fifty dollars versus the five hundred out of the catalog. So, after shipping and handling, we roughly have like a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars to spend on landscaping. So, I just need a motion to utilize the grant funds to purchase picnic tables, garbage can. Then after I do that, I can come back with the final amount that we have left over for landscaping, and we can decide.
We want North Adams green?
Is that, yeah. Is everybody on board with that picnic table and garbage can? Do you need to see this?
I think we talked about changing out that mulch to something else.
Yeah, and we can, well, I can get mulch for free, um, from Brad's work. He can haul that in for us, so that we don't use our grant money for mulch, but, um, we can, when I have that, yeah, if you want to plant flowers or put trees or something in the park, we can use those funds.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Speaking of trees, when we take down trees, we talked before, but is there someplace we can check as to what kind of trees we can replace in the village?
So, consumers used to have a grant program for trees, but the last I heard, consumers have stopped all grants, um, for the time being. There's another program, and they actually, they planted some trees in Jonesville and Hillsdale Parks probably twenty years ago. Um, but you, you have to sign a five-year contract stating that you're going to take care of them. So, that would be something that we'd have to talk about. And at one point, I talked to the school, and they were willing to have, provide student volunteers, like the FFA, to help plant the trees. But we just need to determine, is the school going to be responsible for the upkeep, or is that going to be on the village? I think it, it kind of got pushed to the van burner after we.
And I didn't know if there's certain kinds of trees that you should plant in your village.
And that's.
Once you tear down. Consumers came to our meeting out of eight years ago or so, and they told us different trees that we could plant. What they want is not to have you plant maples, so it grows up in the wires, but stay lower, you know, a shorter tree.
But Hillsdale Jonesville has those pretty flowering ones, and they don't grow huge, and I thought, that'd be kind of nice for North Adams if we figure out.
We can have, maybe we can talk to consumers and see if we can have somebody come back and.
And talk to us.
I also believe the city of Hillsdale has a city forester, that if you were to reach out to the BPU, because I believe their office is there, or even if you were to reach out to Sam Frye, who is the media person, um, and put you in contact, and I'm sure they would be delighted, the city forester would be delighted to visit with you about, and, yeah, I believe that they plant Kentucky coffee, is the flowering tree that you see. Um, and that is one of the trees that is favored for, um, someone urban landscaping. So, but I'm sure they would be delighted. And then Greg Moore, who's been here to speak to you from Consumer Energy. Um, if you don't have his contact information, I'd be happy to reach out to him and find the correct person to be a conservative to contact.
I think it'd be nice to replace someone with some of these flowering or trees that are allowed, or that we do.
Okay, where are we at? Drainy Gishman's Toledo Street, I believe it's Toledo. It's the one between the Car Wash and Martinrea. I would like to call and get a couple quotes to run a tile from the north side of the road to the south side of the road, or vice versa, and then direct that water down a drain someplace. We kind of talked about it a couple of years ago. There might be a drain there that we can use. And if not, we'll have to get that quote, but that way, that's another street. When we repave streets, another time, that needs to be done. When we repave streets, another time that needs to be done. Kinda bad news to wash your car and then drive out in a mud puddle, those could cut the road. So I'm just throwing it out there that I'm, I would like them to get some quotes and. I might call George Arnold and Kenny Shaw. Pardon?
I think that would be a good idea.
Alright.
Cause that seems to get bigger and bigger every time.
It, it does. And then Matt went down there and scraped dirt off the north side of the road and we thought that was gonna help, but it didn't.
I need to talk about CDs really quick, please.
Okay.
Alright, so we reinvested two out of the three CDs that came due and I did updated CD list. Um, so we, I was able to get those in at Southern Michigan Bank, no early withdrawal penalty. But we still have the one for fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Um, we should not put that at Southern Michigan because we'd be over our FDIC coverage for CDs. Um, so we can take that to Flagstar has same rate, it's just not the no early withdrawal penalty. I tried getting that, we could not, um. So I don't know, I know at one point you talked about leaving money for the roads, but we have enough money in the road fund. So I don't know if that's, we wanna reinvest that for thirteen months, what month?
That was for the what, I'm sorry.
Uh, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
And the interest grade on that was?
The last time I checked, it was four point six five APY.
Steven's Southern Mich.
Yeah, and I, and I believe it was either twelve or thirteen months, but it just didn't have the, the early withdrawal penalty. And then another thing that I'm looking into right now as well, I've got one other bank to reach out to. So currently, we only have one account with County National Bank. And it is our only bank account that we have that charges us a monthly fee and we do not earn interest on. So I'm trying to see if we could also move that elsewhere while keeping FDIC coverage on everything. Um, just so we're not losing ten dollars a month on it. So I'll have more information on that next meeting. And then right before the meeting too, Cheryl Griffiths came in for uh, the North Adams Community Library Board. Uh, Sandy Beach, her term expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The library board is asking to renew her term for another four years. Cheryl Griffiths has a note endorsing her saying she's been an excellent board member. Um, but we need a roll call vote if everybody is on board to renew Sandy's term at the library. So I need a motion and then a roll call.
I'll make a motion that we renew. On my on three.
Second.
Okay, ready? Steve?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. And it's on lockdown.
Alright. Uh, I s- I forgot something on old business before we go into street. We got a bill and for three thousand dollars for the dumpsters for Shaw. And our excavator. Had maintained, he's only gonna charge us five hundred bucks for. The excavating. But he wants to wait and see if Michigan Gas is gonna bill him or I. For the gas leak that shouldn't have happened, but it did because of the situation. So we've paid the dumpster bill. I'm just letting you know that the excavating bill is gonna be five hundred bucks unless the gas line bill can get tagged onto it. Okay? With that being said, we got, just so you know how much money we spent. We have a couple of three houses in town that we're gonna have to start pursuing. One on Drelund Street. One on Pratt Street. One on West Main. Matt did clean up since the last meeting and I'm not throwing this out there to start an argument. But Matt did clean up some of the mess, it's just hard to see that he did it. Um, that's all I wanna say about it. But he did get rid of some junk. Alright.
I wish we would clean up them. I'm more worried about all of our kids and goats and dogs that are trying to bite on them.
That's the Pratt Street.
Yeah, that's disgusting.
And we talked about too, and maybe we should get a motion for this. Um, so we've repeatedly sent them letters to clean up and they always say, well, we don't have the money to take things to the dump to get rid of it. So I know last year after uh, spring cleanup, we had room left over in the dumpsters. So I don't know if that's something that we could even offer to them, like if you're willing to get rid of more junk, like just keep throwing away till it's dumpsters full.
I think that would be a good idea.
So I don't know if maybe.
At least fill the dumpster up and then they'll have to get something on their own.
But it's a good start for them to kinda show that they're.
Trying?
Yeah.
Way down?
Yeah, I say if we have that, sure, we're already paying for it, we'll offer it to them, so get rid of some more stuff.
Do we need a motion to accept that if that's really me or something?
Or anybody else whose yards looks like trash, if you went over there too and you wanna keep cleaning up.
And maybe I should add something, so maybe I'll go back to the last year of all the letters I've sent for light ordinances and I'll just send out a letter, just say.
If they need extra space, let us know and we can let them know if we have extra after everybody's done with their two loads and if they need to bring more in.
Contact, cause we have the dumpsters for, you know, longer than that weekend, so maybe you could say like, alright, call us on Monday and you can start.
Yeah, so then they can offer at least.
Yeah. I'll send out a letter. And that's also a reminder to bring cleanup is not this weekend, but next weekend, Saturday, eight AM noon.
Okay, streets, I don't have a lot, but. We did get this fixed out here alongside the building. I was informed tonight after I showed up that we approached on a neighbor's property because of the pole, we're on the property line. I didn't realize that when they asked if they could go around the poles, I just thought it would be okay and. Um, I found out it wasn't, but it's done and I'm not cutting it off. I thought we owned, or somebody in the village, or it's not somebody, or the village owned the right of way of the alley. Now, Livia says she owns that. And that's before my time, she's also upset that our sewer hookup is on her property. That's before my time, so I mean, I tried to tell her that and she got mad and walked away, so.
Rick, can I answer that? I think Rodden told me that she owns part of, with the post office. They each own part of that alley.
That one, yes, but. There's the one on going here, going up through Pratt's, you know, Drelund Street. That goes by the house next to the, the old lumberyard. That is a deeded fire lane road and that's what I thought this was.
Is there a way to check into that, so?
Too late, we're gonna get to sm-.
I know, but we need to check into it just so that it's not an issue and we can say we did. Yeah, it seems odd that it would be that alley, okay, so.
Cause I mean, even the alleyway that goes behind. Going east, those buildings, Baxter's and the old furniture store and that, that is a deeded alleyway. So I just assumed this was two. And I'm only out there about that far, but.
Yeah, I'd have to check into it and see what it is and it's not an issue. Before we even worry about it being an issue, check and see if it can be an issue and then we'll look for evidence it's an issue. But see first before we.
Yeah, we can look into it. Okay. Um. Matt though, he's got infected eyes. He looks like he's been in a cat fight. But anyway, when they poured this cement out here, he was going to fix three spots on the sidewalk going north. In front of uh. The first house past the apartment where they poured the cement around the tree. They were gonna square that up and fill that in with cement. He said there were three of them up that way and he was gonna get those. And he, he was sick with this eye problem, so it didn't get done. They're going to pour sidewalks down on Wilder Street. So when they do that, they'll have cement to put in those little chubby holes, they'll have it dug out, fit. That's all I got. Mr. Downs?
Okay. For last month, we had twelve calls total. Um, ten were medical, two were grass fires. Um, with those grass fires, uh, it was kinda wet. Both times, our grass truck got stuck. I would like to see if we could get some different tires for that thing. The tires that are on it are just radial tires. When we bought that grass truck, we bought it from a fire department that used to use it on uh, ninety-four. And it's, they never used it for fighting grass fire. So these tires out in wet grass and fields, they just fill up with mud and then they're like slicks. So I'd like to see if we can get some different tires, so when we spin them, they'll clean out. I didn't get any quotes yet, but I just figured I'd bring it to the board, see if it's okay to do that, get a couple quotes and, and bring it back and.
See what we can do.
Just get him, let's get the braces first.
Right, that's what I'm asking, to let him go ahead and get the braces, I think you need to.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Okay, um, last month, I talked about the medical class, we had four students, one had backed out. So now we're down to three. Um, I did find out it's seven fifty for the class, but they also need their books, that was not in the price. So it's fif- seven fifty plus the cost of books, um. They have to pay a fee for some la- a lab, a lab fee of twenty-five bucks, plus the books are a hundred and twenty-five, so it's a hundred and fifty. So I still think we're cheaper than the, the, the overall cost that we had for the four students, but I just wanted to bring to you guys' attention that.
So seven fifty plus a hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Plus twenty-five.
No, one fifty is the, the, the cost for the, the fee and the, and the books.
Nine hundred bucks a student. So we're still. We need the person message.
Yes, and that'll start the fourteenth or fifteenth of this month, so. Uh, some updates, um, on the, on the trucks, I called them. Uh, the part for nine five five, they have received it, they're just a matter of getting us scheduled in. And he said uh, sometime within the next week, um, that was Monday. So hopefully by Monday of next week, we'll, we'll get an answer to get nine five five up there.
Okay, nine five five is for rescue?
Yes, now that will not, it does not want to start. I don't know if the starter went bad in it, I don't know what it is, but it just will not turn over at all. The batteries are good, but it does not start.
So is it gonna have to be towed?
I'm thinking so.
So it'll have to tow it?
Yeah, another tow bill for this thing. Um, nine three two, uh, Matt from Dependable, he called on the, the parts. Um, they told him June, they're, they're back. Not, he didn't say back order, but they're, they're um, behind and the, and it's looking like June before he will, will receive the parts for that truck, so. Um, it's October parts, just waiting for it, as soon as he gets them, he'll say it'll have it done in a matter of a, about a week or so and it'll be done, but. Just gotta wait for the parts to come in. Um, I did have Matt come down and take a look at our uh, other engine, nine three O. Um, you may have seen the bill come through, did you see that from Matt, the three hundred and something? Um, while we were out on a training, the um, primer stopped working and then it started leaking over into water. So I knew if we catch it fast enough, I didn't want another issue, so I had him come over and take a look at it right away. But the pump just needed to be adjusted and uh, the solenoid on the actual primer went bad, so he put that in and it was like three hundred and some dollars, so. That's back up and, and going. But while he was underneath, he said there was one seal that is starting to leak, but it's leaking pretty decent. But it's not concerning, but he's probably said within the next six months, we might wanna look that, so. Hopefully we get our truck back running and fixed and.
Soon we get nine three two running.
That's kinda what I figured too, as soon as we get that one back up and, and we can get that one looked at afterwards. The last thing I have, um, we had our association meeting last month. Um, during that meeting, all the chiefs decided to go back to a rotation on the meetings, cause they were held at Station Four. For a while and some of you may know where they, we used to have them. At, at every department, they'd just go through alphabetical order and we'd host it, association meetings, so the chiefs voted to go back to that. Um, it was always nice to see what other departments had in the county and, and check out what they had and, you know, things of that nature, so. That was voted on, I'm not quite certain when we will be hosting it, but we will have it back here.
Maybe we'll have it painted back there.
Meeting's every three months.
Do you have one on the cycle of the group?
Uh, yeah, they'll go through alphabetical order, I imagine. Um, now, I'm, I don't know how it's gonna work because Moscow was last month. And then this next meeting, which will be a three months, which puts us July. July will be down in Montgomery, so I don't know if we will be after that.
Okay.
So that'll put us October.
Maybe they're going backwards through the alphabet, so.
Maybe they might go back, I don't know, but it could be years. Just so your guys are aware of that, we'll be hosting association meetings again, so. And that's all I have.
Sorry, Commissioner, you got anything? Finance Committee, you got anything? Fire Committee, you got anything? Parks Committee? Spend the grant money? Building and grounds Committee?
Buildings.
Building and grounds, it's us, yep.
Oh, I get left to talk about it?
You're on board.
Okay, so we came in to measure to get everything in here painted and we'd like to pull up the carpet if possible. Um, and see about getting that taken care of. We picked out the colors, we can share them with everybody. And I think that's better, cause we changed my window, so.
You guys got the notes with the colors and everything? You guys got the notes with the colors and everything?
Yeah.
And left, yep, so.
Yep, they're out there.
Yep.
And so we have all the measurements to get it repainted in here and then got a few other ideas of like pictures and stuff, but that's not anything new at the cost.
Just for everybody's knowledge, we're gonna go one block higher on the brown.
It's not gonna be brown though.
But we're gonna do a dark gray. And then from there up, we're gonna do...
A lighter gray.
Lighter gray.
And the hall will all be the light gray.
And then through the hallway, it's all gonna be all gray?
Mm-hmm, the light gray.
The light gray.
And the little cold, the little, the, there's all be light gray too.
Are you pulling the carpet in and tile it or?
After, after we get it painted, we wanna work on carpet.
It'll probably be pulled up to start with and then we'll figure out what is the best solution. We're thinking probably vinyl.
I thought there was tile underneath this carpet, there is not.
Which we, we thought if we peeled all the carpet off after things peened, then we will, um, live with the cement until we can figure out, we was talking like a commercial vinyl. That looks like.
Hospitals use it?
Like wood floors or whatever, but it would last quite a while, is what we're thinking.
Can get epoxy also.
But that we found it was more expensive, probably.
Get a couple ideas of quotes for, yeah.
Yeah.
And work is trying to.
We looked at our fireworks show, it was insane.
I loved that a few, it was expensive.
You can get that nice vinyl, like, uh, it's like, uh, what? It's registered for like in the hospitals and stuff, uh, retail.
Commercial grade.
Yeah. I was trying to think of the word.
Very thoughtful.
Hospital.
Use it and last forever, we could too.
We do have a new lady on the fire department, her parents own country carpets.
Oh, really?
They, they just did, our friend at the court, and they were, we had like five quotes and they were by far the, the best bid we got.
Okay, cool.
So I need a motion though to purchase the paint.
I'll make a, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Even though I'm on that committee.
Yep.
I make a motion to get the paint for the community building and hallway.
I'll second it.
In favor?
I'm aye.
Well, with that being said, I have called the sheriff's department. And they will let their work release people come in on Saturday and paint for us. So after tonight, I gotta get on the list and then like make sure we get the paint here.
And we were talking, all the doors would be dark gray, right, Miranda?
Yep.
Should we tell them what we want to do back here?
Do you want to?
What we were talking back here on these squares? Two, four, six, twelve of them? We wanna move that picture. And then we were talking about getting black and white pictures of the village from the olden days. And make them, put them in there so it looks kind of like pictures. And paint the round of black. So it'd have all the history of North Adams in those dozen squares.
So we keep it white, we don't really.
Yeah, it's already real light gray. Yep.
Sounds good to me.
And then we're thinking, cause Williams painted that. Putting it between the bathrooms and then move the history of the fire department, photos and things, over on this wall. So that we don't lose the old painting. Still haven't found anybody that can clean it, but...
It, it's an oil painting.
It's an oil painting and I, yeah. Bieber Williams, I think, wasn't that who painted it?
His wife.
His wife?
Yep.
Whither it was, it was...
Anything else on the building and grounds?
Not right in this one.
Okay.
Sewer, sewer.
I have a question on the sewer. Do we still need the lagoon sprayed by someone? Cause I have someone that has a license and insurance that can do it if we need it done. Matt Ward used to do it, but you wanted a insurance and stuff fine, but he's the guy that can do it.
Brian Smith, our sewer guy. He has got us using something that's legal for us to spray ourselves. But I would take that information and then file it so that we have it.
Okay.
Right now, we're in good standing with the state. Brian Smith called me. Told me that we can start fixing the burn that's washed away out there, but then... The state called and said we need a stamp from an engineer to approve it. So I've got a call into Chris, Chriselberry. And he, he's a hard guy, he'd call back, you just call him until he answers the phone. But Taylor, who did our engineering for East Main Street from full construction. He told me he was, uh, licensed to be able to do sewer work too. So if we can't get a hold of Chriselberry, we're gonna get him. We'll have to have Brian Smith and the contractor call him and so that he knows. And then we can proceed real soon on getting the stone and stuff into the... Ryan hasn't started releasing water yet, but... He's gotta be done releasing water by the end of May.
May.
So he told me that... It wouldn't take a month, but he's gotta drain the water out. And then he has to transfer the water from the north pond into the south pond. So that they have room to work on it.
Work on the, the?
On the burn.
Okay.
Until it fills up far enough, they can't work on it no more and then they'll have to come back next fall and hit it again. Ryan's kind of on top of it, so... He runs one or two others down on this other part of the county, so... We're all set, but we just need that, um, engineering stamp. Um, anything else on the sewer, any questions or anything? Ordnance committee, you got anything? Yep.
Personnel.
Personnel, excuse me. Ordnance committee, going, going, gone. Okay, personnel committee?
Okay, so the personnel committee had their first meeting at the end of March. Um, and we started with the public works job description, so sewer, street maintenance. Um, they made a lot of updates and handed out copies of that. Um, if everybody'd like to read through that. We're still working on the vacation time portion. Um, as far as how accrual time off is gonna, gonna work, and I think Desiree was kind of handling. Yeah, portion of it. Um, and then we also started breaking down the handbook. And that's a very big job, so we're gonna meet again probably sometime in May, so we can keep working on that. Um, but this was our first task at hand, so everybody now has an updated copy of job description. If you have any questions, let me know. Anything else that might, uh, help me add to personnel?
Me? Oh, no, sorry. I read through this when you sent it to me, sorry, I was like, wait. And that's all I have then for that.
Anything else from the board?
I'm questioning the signs, you have to go up here. I know Matt said they had the holes so they could put the poles in, but we gotta get signs.
Did the signs get ordered?
No.
Ellie was too busy, has a plate full that someone's gotta take to get the signs.
Somebody, or, somebody just tells me what needs to be ordered, I've never gotten a definite answer of this is what we're doing.
It gets put off and put off month after month.
I know at the last, so the meeting, I was in the last meeting, but the minutes did say that it was customer parking only is what was decided on. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I'll have to look back at my notes.
Yeah.
Until we get the, uh, signs up, we can't.
Charge fines.
Fees fines for parking there, we're gonna have.
Yeah, and I think they were frightening the exec, I think she was gonna come down and talk to you, but maybe Desiree hasn't had time to come down and...
I'll reach out to her then.
School's almost over, so it'll slow down, then I'm gonna... It's that end of the school year, so you don't... Cause I know that the wordage was what was being discussed and then the signs, cause she can print the signs or put the stuff right on the signs. We just have to purchase the signs, yeah.
Okay.
I have that somewhere.
So maybe when school's out, we need to have Matt and Desiree come down to the office with the ball, so we don't have to help.
Yeah.
So we're on the same page.
Yeah, cause I think that's what was the whole of, was we're deciding exactly what was on the signs.
Okay.
And I don't know what committee needed to meet for that, I don't remember what was said. And I'm trying to find it, cause I know I wrote it down, but...
I didn't remember nothing that I need.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, they were talking about what was exactly on the signs.
Okay. And also going back to last month's meeting, um, I know it was talked about three hundred dollars for Heritage Days and then fifteen hundred dollars for the summer rec. I need two separate motions to be able to cut those checks. So if I could get a motion, um, to write a fifteen hundred dollar check to the summer rec league?
I make a motion to pay fifteen hundred dollars to the summer rec.
I'll second it.
And then I also need a motion to...
In, in favor?
I'm aye.
Post, okay.
And then I also need a motion to write a three hundred dollar check to the Heritage Day committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support it.
In favor?
I'm aye.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know that they have found anyone to do the car show. And they have decided we're not gonna do a street dance.
Or fireworks.
And we're not doing fireworks. It costs like, she says, six thousand dollars for...
Five minutes of fireworks.
Five minutes of fireworks. And that doesn't include the money that we.
They will have the tractor pulls, things for the kids, the outhouse races.
Yep.
Um, they're still looking for the car show, I've seen their post a couple times on Facebook looking for anybody to host it.
It's just, I think, people are looking for help and when they realize that it's way more work than they anticipated it'd be, yeah.
Seems like I'm forgetting something.
She said it's just harder to find people to donate, is what Melissa said, to get all of the stuff on this.
Probably comment, John?
The driveway approaches, when are we gonna start filling those in? I mean, is there, is there like a schedule for that, so we do it every year at the same time?
Whenever Matt thinks of adding a few of them.
Okay, well, mine needs to be filled in along with my neighbor's, but it, it seems like it'd be nice to have that on the schedule every year, so he goes around and... You know, does it at the end of April, beginning of May or...
What exactly is that? Like what do we fill in?
So the approach for my driveway off the road?
Uh-huh.
All the potholes that are there?
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I was a hundred percent sure I wanted to talk about.
It should be a routine yearly schedule.
Right, yep.
We can add that to that spreadsheet, I did make one, I forgot to send it to you. Um, but I just started the spreadsheet, I can do the checklist.
To start like in between, at like after spread cleanup or something, it'd be a good.
Just have it on there so it can't be.
Yeah, like a routine yearly.
So everybody knows. So even if Matt's not here, if somebody else takes over, it's all enough.
In this.
So that everybody knows. Now, um, the spreadsheet that we're gonna make that has like the list of what everybody needs to do. So it'll say what needs to be done in the spring, the fall, weekly, yearly. So as we go along, so that even if Matt leaves or anybody comes in to help too, they will know what to do. So we're not just passing the buck and having no idea really what's supposed to be going on, we're just like, hey, this is what needs done, but...
Some more structure.
Yeah. Have ideas so that everybody knows exactly what's supposed to be done.
Ronnie?
When they do get in here, the jail people are coming. Is somebody from the board gonna be here? Or is it just?
They come under a policeman's supervision.
Did any of you see when they painted the yellow poles last time?
Alros. Why?
Well, over along here, I seen them. And they would just take that paintbrush and the paints are dripping and they're just slapping it on like that.
That's why we're leaving the carpet until they're done.
So I'm not so sure you're gonna have a straight line there, but...
Going across the.
We'll have to tape it off.
You can tape it off.
Um, it definitely won't be supervised.
It's a good point, but that's the first I'd heard of it. Cause Al was here off and on most of the day.
Well, there was about five of them over here. One was a gal. And they were kind of pushing paint against each other. And it was just a slop of the paint was. And then they didn't paint the ones over there by, by Joanne and Janice.
It's because they ran the paint.
But I have no holes now because of the others broke off. But that's just something I observed. And this is probably a whole different bunch of, kind of. So what streets are going to be redone?
Pave?
Yes.
Nap, Monroe and Wilbur. Anybody sitting on those corners, get their taxes raised up.
God, if he's got.
I'm, I'm just picking on you.
Uh, I do wanna say though, that I had a lot of compliments on the lot across the road with those, those trailers down. So... It was a plus to get them out of there.
So far, it's cost us thirty-five hundred bucks.
Well, that's not bad, it could have been worse, right?
It would have been worse if we hadn't got the excavating guy in that we did.
I'm just getting back at you.
No, that's fine.
We're just thankful it's gone.
And it does look better, and I've had people from out of town.
And that last dumpster. I swear, I saw the side bone because they were trying to finish it up with that last dumpster and they put a big wad in there. It was packed tight. A lot tighter than the first two they had of it.
We're just thankful it's gone.
Anything else? Okay, we need a motion.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second it.
In favor? The phone, sit here, sit. Thank you.